I just thought of my daughter yesterday.
All right. Everyone, we're gonna call me in your order. If everyone can stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. A little off topic on you here, Carolyn, before we start. I missed last month's meeting and I just wanted to real quickly just express my, since the holidays are all about, you know, thanks and appreciation. Just express my appreciation to each one of you as board members for the time you guys give our district. As Jason talks about numerous times here, the unpaid employees of the district. And it goes a lot of time from answering emails to answering phone calls from families. And a lot goes into it more than just showing up once a month to a meeting. So I appreciate each one of your dedication to the district along with Andy, Molly, Jason, our leadership team. I know this is extended hours after your normal workday to be with us and prepare these each month for us. So I do appreciate it. Nick and Antonio bear every meeting with us as well. We greatly do appreciate the guys. So to get started with the meeting, we have public to be heard first, anything?
No.
All right. Well, then we'll skip right to our good news. You have a slide here for me?
Thank you.
Possibly. I'll sit down here to see if we can. All right, here we go. First off, we have from Dr. Kryne, our BMS principal. The BMS family, Fall Family Night was an outstanding success. The event brought together students, families, staff, and community partners in a way that truly highlighted the strength of our community, school community. Attendance exceeded expectations and the positive energy throughout the evening reflected the strong connections we continue to build for our families. Let's see, Carolyn, you wanna scroll down a little bit? We won't read every single one of them.
I will.
Possibly. All right, let's see if I can reach it to her here. We have Mrs. Nataro from Jackson, principal. Lisa Bonarigo is a fantastic social worker. She connects families with outside providers and ensures they get what they need. Thank you, Lisa, for being a great asset to our families. From Jennifer Sloan, our JK instructional support specialist. Cody Grass and Plan worked incredibly hard to plan, organize, and lead cumulative activity for the end of the fourth grade ELA module called Survival Day. It was an amazing experience for all the students who participated. John McCarthy, BHS Social Studies teacher. Thank you to the entire Batavia City School District for your donations to support the BTA Peanut Butter and Jelly Drive that benefit the Salvation Army Food Pantry. There's some few other things on here as well. I asked you guys to take a look at it, read through it. There's a lot of great things that happened throughout the school district and a few of those are highlighted each month for us, so we appreciate it. And we hope that our staff continues to send those in for us to see each month. All right, let's move right into our presentations. First off, we have our educational technology update from Mrs. Wendy Malone, our Director of Educational Technology.
There we go. Okay, it didn't like me, but it liked you. Okay, thank you. Thank you tonight for having me. I like to update on what's going on in educational technology. First of all, our clicker, hopefully, there we go. Our clicker moves now. So I'm gonna just review some of the items that I reviewed last year. So when I presented last year, I talked about the alignment we have of our audit requirements for the district. And I'm gonna continue with that update as it's an ongoing process. We're always gonna be updating and making sure that we are compliant with everything that we need to do as far as our network security and also our board policies. So some of the things we did this year for that is we were able to fill the network position. We have a network staff position full-time now in the district, which allows us to oversee the operation, security, and system updates that we have within Batavia. We have infrastructure improvements that we have to do and that also keeps them able to make sure that the security and the compliances is correct on that as well. We also had a position open for a customer support, which is like a help desk person. We were able to fill that position as well. That person is like your point of contact. That person is answering phones, coordinating all the help desk tickets, working closely with the staff, the technician staff. And we're actually also, we do take some parent calls through that system as well. Actually, we get more parent calls every day when they have questions about Parents Square, which is great. Enforcing our board policies with our inventory control. We've actually gone through and identified all of the inventory that we need to have within the district and also in compliance with the controller audit that we had a couple of years ago. With the inventory, we actually did an evaluation by a staff member here within the district that took us a whole year to complete. We went through every single room, we went through every single device and made sure that everything was correct. And we matched it with the inventory that we had on file. In addition to that, I worked with Andy to bring in Q-Star Bosse's and they came in and inventoried all of our district-owned equipment. So we have district-owned equipment, we have Bosse's owned equipment. So we, the department, did both. And a second audit came in, we just did Batavia equipment to make sure all that was enough, which was good because we found a lot of like corrections. In the process right now of taking all of that inventory that we corrected, updated, and bringing it into a system, which will be like an inventory, an official inventory system that will allow us to maintain and update that inventory as we go through the future. Technology leadership. We have some policy and procedures that we created. I actually have worked diligently in getting some of the ADL2D compliances, which would be contracts with vendors. So we have vendor contracts that are through Bosse's when we purchase software through them. And then we have vendor contracts when we purchase directly from us. So I've made sure that we're compliant with that. In addition to any third-party vendors that may be coming into the building, which would be outside services that we use, working with STA and all sorts of other like vendors that we have that actually see our student information system. So I've been working diligently on that. And also any existing software that we have, we make sure it's meeting all their correct requirements. I have worked diligently in the last year to get the leadership in the department organized by meeting with our staff weekly, so we have weekly meetings. With that new customer support position, I have now a central point of communications, which is great. So if we have any issues, any down, anything down or any kind of like problems, we have one person who's coordinating the rest of our staff, which is terrific because it makes it a central point of person we can actually, you know, communicate to help solve problems quicker. We have also some workflow. We actually work really diligently on workflows that we have coordination with what every position is now overseeing and what areas they are checking daily to make sure that all of our compliances is working, all of the PRIS is working, and also all of our equipment is working correctly. So the ownership of different responsibilities has been delegated as well. Also the budget, been working very diligently on the budget, making sure that we stay in line with the budget for our technology. And also any purchases we need for this year and years to come. Working really hard on creating a five-year budget for the department. Technology areas, infrastructure. We worked this past summer with Bosse's. They came into every single building, went through every single network closet and verified and audited all the equipment within our closets. The audit consisted of what we have, if it's working correctly, if it's updated, and then the year expectancy of what we have in our closet so that we have that budget to make sure that we have the funding we need when we have to replace that type of equipment. We also worked with filtering and data privacy. So all of our information that we have, all of our internet, our connections to outside vendors sift through Bosse's. So we have to work with them to make sure the filtering that we have is correct. And also they communicate with us that there's any filtering issues that we may have or any particular vendors that we can't access because of our filters. We have to work to approve and get those connections. Student Chromebooks. We have been working with reassessing each of the buildings with the student Chromebooks. We've created a bunch of different policies this year to ensure breakage and/or lost equipment is identified and tracked so that we make sure we keep that in addition to our inventory so that we don't have any loss of equipment at the end of the year. Let's see. Classroom software, that goes hand-in-hand with maintaining our software and our vendor contracts to make sure that we have all that compliant and also make sure that we have a good array of software so that it meets the needs of every classroom. We, ClassLink is something we've had for a couple of years, but this past summer we actually went through and did a full audit on ClassLink. We removed a lot of the different configurations so that we can do it by building, by classroom, so that we have a little bit easier view of what we can see behind the scenes so we know exactly what the seventh graders are using, what the eighth graders are using. So we did an overhaul of that this past summer and we were able to fix the backend and create it by groups and permissions and building levels. So if we wanna pull data to see how much software is being used in a particular grade, we can actually pull that data from ClassLink out per grade. And also per student, we can actually drill down that level. Data security and privacy again, that's a big topic. Not only did we work with, not only did I work with managing all the ADL compliances agreement, so we also came up this year with an acceptable use policy that every single staff member has to sign. They send that digitally. We are doing a no before training to make sure phishing is not an issue within our district and to make sure that people are able to identify what that is. We also worked, we're collaborating with a registrar so that we have all of our information's appraised on our new students that are coming into the district as well as students that are within the district. Because we do have a new registrar that started this, six months ago, maybe? Yeah. Auditing vendors and partnerships with the data complacency, reviewing all the contracts, filtering, auditing our filter, a lot of auditing we did this past year. A lot of different areas, software, computers, closets, servers, filtering, just to make sure everything is in compliance. AI, AI is a big topic. We have many AI features built into the software that we've had for years. I ready has AI built into it. I excel has AI built into it. So all of these softwares already have a component of AI. So what we're trying to do is just to make sure that we understand what it's doing within that product, the teachers understand that it's built in there, and that we are all embracing what we have and making sure that we're using it correctly. As far as an outside product, the only two outside products that we brought in so far is Magic School and Upris. And those are two standalone AI-type products that we brought into the district. We did some professional development over the summer for those. And we're watching, you know, behind the scenes on how those are being used. We also encourage that each teacher is aware and, you know, talks about AI with our students so that we start to understand. I mean, the way AI is, it's like when social media first came out. It's, we really need to make sure that people understand what it is and that it is embedded in everything we do. And we need to use it safely. More to come on this, we're working on this. Molly and I are working closely on this. District growth. Increased response time now that I have a network person and also a customer support person. We have increased the response time to a lot of our tickets. We're proactive on procedures and policies, making sure that things are talked about ahead of time. So being proactive on that. Expanded in support communications for parents. And that, the communications, the expansion of that has helped with Parents Square. So Parents Square's been in the district now, I think this is our third year. We started out with Parents Square and the teachers with the communications. We've actually expanded that for the whole district. So it's really kinda cool now because parents ask for it. They're like, oh, you guys said Parents Square, I heard, I wanna make sure I'm getting that. So they want those updates. So Parents Square has been very, very well received. And parents all have it through their teachers. We, this year, added it to Student Square. So Student Square is just like Parents Square, but it's used with the students. So what we did with that is we added it into the athletic department. So now when the coaches wanna send a message out to the students, they're sending a message to the students, but all the parents get it as well. So that is helping us to expand our communications. We have a couple of clubs that are using it. We're not quite there with all clubs. So that's our process is trying to just kind of like get people comfortable with it. The kids now have access to it under Chromebooks and we're continuing with that. And one of the things that Parents Square is working on is the communications between a parent and their child. And that's something that's supposed to be coming this summer, so. Curriculum, instruction and program. Been collaborating with Dr. Corey, the building principal, setting up simulations for computer-based testing. We have a simulation in January. We are fully computer-based for testing, which means testing is online. And that was required by the state. This year, everybody has to do it. So we are, and we're ready. We've done it last year, we did it the year before, so we're prepared for that. Working with the special education department to make sure we coordinate tutoring. We've been working tutoring for the students. They have to use like Google Meet. There's some regulations that are required to make sure we need for a child under the age of 14 to use those types of tools. So we've been working on that as well. Steven STEM growth. Meeting with key stakeholders to plan expansion. I mean, actually meeting with the library media specialists next month to make sure we're starting to create like a program that's consistent through the district. So they start even kindergarten and they work all the way through K-12 and receiving some of the same literacy and expect, expectations, especially with AI and social media. And also enhancing Steven STEM, which would be robotics and all that other coding and all that. Developing a five-year plan for expectations, purchases, and program growth. So in summary, we're continuing to work with the Batavia City School District, delivering strong support and looking forward to solutions that we can do to work and grow in the digital age. Do you have any questions?
Do you feel that you were sufficiently staffed now?
I do. I feel much more comfortable with what we have. We are, you can ask us a question and we can answer it just sitting at our desks. Before it would be like, we'd have to run all over the place to get an answer to something simple. So I guess I do.
With the Student Square, what grades are using that?
Excuse me?
Student Square? What age and grades are students using that?
So right now, we do have modified using it. So it's gonna be middle school. It would just, sixth grade through 12 is typically the age range that you would have. You wouldn't use it with little ones. Yeah.
How often those audits? How often are you required to do audits?
Once a year. Yeah, for ADL2D, once a year. The way they support that is every contract, honestly, has to be re-signed yearly. So the audit is not only making sure it's compliant, but also making sure it's updated. Yeah. And we're also doing acceptable use policies every year. We already have staffs on it every year. And then our no before, which is all of our training for phishing and all of that to keep that out. That's done. That was done every year, but we had a little fun, so we decided to do it every six months. So we'll see how that goes next year. You're welcome.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Nelson, do you have another question?
Just, just a quick question about, so you feel confident that everything is tracked through inventory?
I feel 99.9% that we have everything tracked as I stand here today. I don't wanna lose that though. That's why we're working into a new system to make sure that we can maintain that. Because when you lose equipment, break equipment, the teacher leaves, someone else. You know, there's a lot of movement in this district. So I hope I can stand here, July 1st, and say the same thing. Yeah. Okay?
Yep.
Wendy, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I just wanna compliment Wendy. As you mentioned, we have incident in the fall that sent us our email. It was a Saturday morning over a long weekend. Wendy was very responsive to our emails and calls and texts. We had a board member that was compromised as well. We just wanna thank Wendy and her staff for dealing with it all over the weekend, so.
Thank you.
Just to point that out, thank you, Wendy.
Yeah, I appreciate it, but then that's where the training came from.
All right, next up, we have our high school principal, Jenny, along with her teammates. I'll allow you to introduce them. And the floor is yours.
Oh, that's a, thank you. It takes a village to raise me, so my team told me, make sure I point to the right place. So thank you very much for having us from the high school for our update today. So we are the high school admin team. I'm Jenny West, the principal.
Right, it's been a while since principals.
Dan Dorr, the other assistant principal.
So as you know, this is the mission and vision statement for the district. Again, I know you guys are very familiar. I just, I keep these words bolded because when I came here, these were the words that really stuck out to me as the principal, and these are the words that I try to hold to. So empowering students to their maximum potential and then really that safe nurturing environment, high moral character, and successfully meeting life's challenges. So we educate the whole child and we can educate all students. And there's our strategic plan. So this evening, we're going to share with you our update and how we connect to the strategic plan. So this year, our student theme is learn with purpose, live with impact. So this is my third year as principal. And my first year, we did promoting the independence within, really trying to tell kids that we know you're independent, bring it to school. Last year, we did, we exist for learning. And we talked about, we're always learning, but that intentional piece is how we really take hold and maximize what we get out of school. And then this year, building on that, it is learn with purpose and live with impact. So the idea to my, to our students consistently is that we have a great developmental range in our building, but their choices help us to determine what they need. And so we continue to have that dialogue with them, that the choices that they make help us to promote their independence. And if they make a choice that maybe shows that they need more guidance, we just helped by putting those guardrails on. So our first real goal area this year continues with the PLC process. And I know that the board is very familiar with PLCs. But again, it's really that high-quality instruction and it's that wonderful process that helps teachers to really stick to those quality impact criteria that they should be planning for on a daily basis. So our first goal area is connected to our strategic plan areas two, three, and four. So as you know, high-quality instruction is where it's at and what we want for all of our learners. And really, it's three things that we call out to make high-quality instruction. It's academic rigor, it's social-emotional learning, and it's also that inclusivity, which really equal high-quality instruction. And I like to call them the habits of heart, mind, and soul. And again, they're just all those different components of the puzzle piece that really matter. If you just focus on one, you're really not gonna get the successful outcomes that schools need. So I am so proud, I'm not gonna lie. I'm so proud of BHS this year because my building committed. So as you can understand, secondary school is a beast. There are lots of moving parts, it is credit-bearing, you have multiple things that are going on all the time. And the PLC process was rolled out a few years ago and we've done our best, but we did not have a lot of the mechanisms in place. So this year, we were able to put a ton of mechanisms in place simply because my teachers came to consensus and agreed on a really important change this year, which is unlike most secondary teachers around. I've been around for quite some time in high school, I can't get out. So these are some of the things that we did. I'll mention them briefly and I'll dig into a few more in the next slides. So we are in deep with that PLC process, which is all about that collaboration. We've added a new component to our schedule, which I'll share with you, which is called WIN. We are in the thick of our Regents exams. As you know, they have changed over time and we're in the next-gen phase. And it is very heavy with literacy and with expecting students to be really strong readers. So that's added another layer for some of our content areas. We've also, we have a professional focus this year that's really dialing into literacy across the board as well as starting to kind of enhance our ENL strategies in the classroom to build capacity throughout.
Just after the ENL.
I am so sorry. English is a new language, learners. I see, I'm in the biz and I am so, so sorry about that. Yeah, so in general, when you are trying to support all learners, we know that we have to shore up what we call tier-one instruction, which is what happens in the classroom at that base level. And we wanna make sure our teachers have all of the things that they need through professional development to make that work for all of our learners. And then also this year, I'm very, very proud, it's tough work, but we've added some components to the special education continuum that the high school has not had recently, which again, is a little bit of work, but we're excited because we know we're heading in the right direction. And we also were able to add a special education chair that is also familiar with high school this year. So that's been really helpful for us for that added layer from our perspective. So some of the ways that we actually got to the place of having the tools that we need is we reallocated some of our teaching assignments. And from there, we were able to select two of our teachers to become PLC coaches part of their day through their FTEs. And we have one coach that is kind of dedicated to our ELA and social studies, which is Kim Crispiz. And then we have our BTA union president, Mark Warren, who's a math teacher who's kind of seeing, overseeing math and science, working very closely together, just informing each other and helping to lift the work. And then we've also restructured all of our meetings, meaning that the meetings that teachers have after school, teachers have after school, there is a component for collaborative work in every one of those meetings. So we've kind of parsed down what's not important, what's email-worthy versus what's meeting-worthy, and tried to restructure there. So this is the big change. And again, I cannot thank my teachers and my building enough for taking this risk. We're in the middle of change, and change is hard, but we did it. So we were able to take a little bit of time off of our standard 82-minute block, reallocate our day, so we pulled out a particular intervention block, 30 minutes a day, every single day, which we call WIN. And WIN really just stands for what I need. So each department out of this structure, and again, we're a work in progress, so we are continuing to gather feedback, and we can talk a little bit more about that. But essentially, we have this 30-minute time that's built in every day to use flexibly to meet students' needs. So a little more about WIN. And listen, I'm always about being real honest because I work with high school kids. So you can ask one kid about WIN, and they'll say it's smashingly successful. You can ask another kid, and they're like, I'm not really sure what we're doing around there. So we are truly gathering voice, student voice, and adult voice, as we continue to try to see the best way to meet this need. But essentially, it's called what I need. It's data-driven, and it's really meant to give kids just that little bit of extra support. It's not like a deep-dive intervention. If you truly need that extra pull-out service, this might not meet your need, but this is a way to get some reteaching, to get some extension, to just kind of dip in maybe before a quiz or an exam. So essentially, what we have is it's about 12 students or less in a rotation with a teacher. Our teachers, every sixth day, their department will drop off, and they'll get an additional half hour of common planning time. We, like I said, are working on, right now, teachers are selecting students on different rotations based on the data that's happening in their classroom. But over time, we will be opening up, so students will also have a voice in this and be able to seek out and access support that they choose. One of the things that we added last year that we've expanded on, that I just briefly mentioned, was iXL. This is kind of like iReady, but on the higher, older kid level. So it's a great system. We were able to use universal screeners. We did not have them recently, so we're able to snapshot where kids are ELA and math. They're New York State standard-aligned, and we can use them across all four cores this year, as well as other things. There's like Spanish in there, some test prep, ACT, SAT, world languages, and lots of other things built in. It is a flexible and fluid system, and it's independently responsive to students. They're able to use it. It can give them help in real time. It can offer them some videos and some skill, help work on lagging skills. It can also push them to an extension space, and there are just multiple ways to use it. So teachers are using it, kids are using it independently, we're using it for screeners. There's multiple things that we can do with it. Some of our teachers have just run and done great things, other teachers are learning, but we continue to grow using this tool. And then we did start a true guiding goal edition this year. So we meet twice a month because we know that we have a lot of work to lift this year. You can see we have our norms through the PLC. It's super important that teams are collaborative, and they are really designing what that journey and that roadmap looks like as they are collaborating and planning together, and really just being vulnerable, present, and together, and inclusive. And then we did add, we rolled up a special ed continuum. So one of the most difficult things in high school was that we only had one part of the special ed continuum unless you were a student who was alternatively assessed. So if you were a student who was Regents-bound, in middle school, your programming might have had a self-contained classroom that was just a special education classroom. You may have had a blended classroom, but when you came to high school, you only were offered the least amount of service, which we consider consultant teacher. So one of the important things with the PLC process is to make sure that we are programming for students based on their academic needs. And so I'm excited to say that this year, we were able to offer, we started last year, I apologize, we added ICT, which is called integrated co-teaching. The difference for that, won't get you in the weeds, but the difference is you have two teachers in your classroom, and they're co-teachers. So instead of the special education teacher just pushing in and servicing the kids that are on their caseload, they actually work with a content specialist, they're the special education specialist, and the point of it is to work together in a classroom that is general education and special education, and it's really a nice mix where all peers are benefiting from each other. So we have grown on that. Our teachers have gone to professional development. We'll continue to grow them in that skill. Right now, we have it at nine and 10 for our four cores, and we are hopeful to add it to 11th grade next year as well. Additionally, self-contained is a different level of service that some students need, which really is a different pacing of a program, and it might be drilling it down into some very core essential skills. And so we were able to add an ELA and a math self-contained co-sat ninth and 10th grade. So this was extremely helpful for us this year when we had our students who transitioned to ninth grade who were already in those settings. So we did notice the first two years I was here, it was a little bit difficult for some of those students to come right in and to go into a different type of setting, and they hadn't grown in their independent skills, and we hadn't necessarily shored up all those gaps yet. So I am very happy to say that this is going really well for us as we continue to start to grow this continuum. And then areas of opportunity. So I would say, just talking about some of the things that we were talking about right now, literacy is definitely an area. I've been, like I said, I've been in high school for some time, and the Regents have made a decision. So what they used to program for was the reading level would meet like right before you went to college. Like there was a little bit of a gap in a reading skill of what they said that a student would need to get to college versus what you needed to graduate. So now, what the Regents are programming for is students to be at that level that you need for college-level entry. And so that's difficult for some of our students who are struggling with text, or struggling with understanding different components of literacy. That's very normal for a lot of kids who've been through COVID and different things that changed, and you know, lots of things. So I don't want to call out just BHS. This is something that we see across the board in all schools, but it is an area of need, and especially because the rigor of the state assessments has increased. So we do know that we're going to portrait of a graduate eventually, but the students who are with us today will need to have those assessments to graduate and walk that stage. And one other area is just as we continue to see a little bit more of the increase in special education, we know that that comes with programming mandates, and so that's just another area of opportunity that we continue to dig into at the high school. And then this is just some language, I'm not going to read it to you, I'll give you just a second, but essentially, this is just language right from the state that is talking about through the next-generation standards, how important it is that all of the tests are now a part, I mean, are now also accessing and assessing students' literacy. And so again, it's just really one of those vehicles that we have to pay attention to because even if our kids are able to demonstrate in different ways they know what they know and what they can do through a Regents assessment, they need to do it in this vehicle. And the last thing I'm going to say before I turn it over is for our APPR process, our focus this year is we're really, really, really asking our teachers to hold to those literacy protocols. So we've had professional development. I'm very happy to say we're working with Cheryl Doberton, and Kim Prisbyz is also one of our ELA teachers and our PLC coaches, doing a ton of lift. Our teachers have really been wonderful. They've been owning this. Every classroom I'm going into, I'm seeing people interact with text. And so this is just a really big thing for us this year that we hope if we continue to do, we will see the success across the board.
So I have to share, I can't believe it's going to be a year in like two weeks since I've been here. And some days, it feels like just yesterday, and others, it feels like I've been here forever. And I think that just speaks to like the community, the welcoming feeling. I can go to sporting events, and everyone says hi. So I just want to give a shout out because I've enjoyed it here, and it still doesn't feel like a year, which is crazy to me. So to get back to this, so academic eligibility, obviously, still happening, still in full swing. We are utilizing the extended day, morning, and after-school opportunities for kids if they need to, and plan how many classes they're failing to attend and meet their requirement of hours. And really, how it's working is our counseling office, the report's getting generated, so like Kim Shay gets a report if one grades come out, then she disperses it to coaches, however she does it, and then on our end, so obviously, our kids that are in clubs and advisors. And then from there, obviously, that advisor coach should start in really making sure that the kids that need to be held accountable and printing in their sheets are doing so. So still work in progress, still trying to support the kids and encourage them participating and being involved outside of the school day, but still having that accountability factor and making sure that the student part comes first. Our SEL commitment, obviously, the core of really trying to get to the root to the problem and figuring out what the kids' needs are. I think one of the biggest misunderstandings at times is just that like the kid gets out of the consequence, which is not the case. And you know, a lot of times, the consequences still happen, but like how do we actually fix it? So if they said something hurtful to another person, how do we make that repair? So both people feel okay, and the student that did the harm understands what the intent to grow from it. You know, staff events, obviously, for our adults in the building to make sure everybody's committed and taking care, and just trying to show support, celebrate when we can. You know, staff shout-outs, student shout-outs, I think it's easy to just get focused on the things that, you know, might be negative at times, and then you forget all the celebrations. And really, there are so many amazing things happening, and sometimes it just gets consumed by that one thing that really took you down that day. Some of the other pieces, our commitment to it, so classroom circles are still happening through Blue Connect, which is awesome, and a lot of great things come from that. What I'm really excited about is upcoming is the peer mediation training. So what wound up happening to some of our students will then be able to peer mediate if peers are in conflict, still under adult supervision. They go through a whole training process, so they're ready to do it, but it still doesn't mean that we just let them go do it on their own. There's adult, usually Mr. Metler is involved, potentially a counselor that would actually supervise that to make sure it goes as it's supposed to. But a lot of times, you know, students sometimes hear things more clear from their peers than, you know, me or another adult that's just telling them what to do because we're the adult, and that's, you know, they think that's what we do for fun. I'm not really sure. Inclusivity and connection, there's so many awesome things happening all the time. Here's just a few examples. So Make a Difference Day, it's a great experience for underclassmen, all the different activities they get to take part in. Our SEL liaisons, being part in win groups, again, trying to build those, probably soft skills that the kids need to be successful. Our family night, which is always a great thing for SEL. Excited to see that in the spring because it was really well-attended. Some additional connections, obviously, our seniors who Make a Difference Day, you know, family dinners, we had some of our teams go over to Jackson, which is really cool. They seemed to have a blast and did a great job. And then our key club is bell ringing. And then one of the things that was really awesome to see this year with Coach Chris Swazi, he, I think we were actually the first school to test this out, trying to just kind of reenact the, I'll call it the college game day experience, where you see everybody sitting kind of at like a table that you guys are at, interviewing, kind of, you know, pre-game, all of that stuff, that it gave our kids the opportunity to be interviewed, to share their experiences. It involves some of our students in the BOSI's program to connect it to what, you know, the Genesee County Economic Development Center is doing. They did it right before our game with HFL. So I just thought it was, you know, another opportunity to really showcase how awesome our kids are, what they're doing. What better than a Friday night football game, too, to do it? So it was just awesome. Obviously, worked with Joel Reed, our athletic director, and then the Genesee County Economic Development Center to really get it planned, and I mean, I heard a lot of cool things. The kids that were part of it thought it was awesome. And I think our cheerleading team, if I'm remembering correctly, was like our spirit in the background, which was cool. So I feel like it simulated it, and it was just a cool experience for our kids. So I'm going to switch it back to Ms. West now.
All righty. So for goal two, this is just really around our safety and security, and it's building on what we started last year. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Door, because he is overseeing safety this year.
Thank you, Chris. So obviously, safety and security is a major part in any school district, in any high school especially. And besides the drills that were mandated to practice every year, we take those drills very seriously, but we also reflect on those processes to make them as smooth as possible, to make them work for everybody. For example, we often debrief after an emergency drill or a lockdown drill to make sure that things went smooth, and if there's anything we can do better. We also work with our maintenance department, so if some say a fire door didn't close properly during a drill when it should have, you know, we're communicating that and getting that problem fixed right away. And we also make a focus on trying to be proactive instead of reactive. A lot of, you know, unfortunately, what makes the news is a district being reactive to a problem. We would much rather work as a team to be proactive and try to get ahead of things. And that brings me to this, our threat assessment team. This is something that we've really dug into this year. It started up a little bit last year, but we've really dug into it this year. We've committed to it, bi-weekly meetings of this team. And the team is made up of a diverse group, counselors, social worker, school psych, the admin team. Occasionally, if we need to, we pull in, say, our school resource officer, Borket. But this is a team that has multiple connections with kids on different layers, right? Because admin, we might know who's in trouble, right? Unfortunately, we often get to know those kids best, but a counselor may know a student that's kind of flying under the radar and be able to fill in a piece that we may miss, or vice versa. And this team works to, again, be proactive. We want to help kids, we want to support them, we want to get ahead of issues that may cause a problem in the future, and we want to help solve those problems before they turn into a true threat situation. And you can see that there is training that this team completes annually. That's an example of the certificate of completion that you get. So congratulations, Ms. Westina, you're certified. And last but not least, my contribution tonight, the digital hall pass system. This is a system that, again, was started last year, but we really rolled it out in earnest this year. It is a fully electronic pass system, so if any student in the building needs to go to their locker, the bathroom, the nurse, library, whatever the case may be, counseling department, they get a pass. It's all logged in our system online electronically. The teacher makes the pass, the student walks down the hall once they get to destination, that person checks them in. It's all very high-tech, but it's also a good data for us because it helps us to respond to safety and security issues that can happen in the hallways, right, in our schools. Helps us to track where students are, how often are they out. One of the features that I think is particularly helpful is it actually has a ability to limit contacts. So if you know that two students have a rough time right now, and they're in conflict, and you're still working through those processes, and you don't want them to be in the hall at the same time during classes, you can set that up so that two teachers cannot put those students out in the hall at the same time. And then as we work through that, then we can release that control once we get through those, any friction that may exist there. And this system really came around because of feedback that we got as a school community from multiple stakeholders. And I'll turn it back over to Principal West for cell phone.
Thank you. So this is the hot topic, right? And I'm just so happy to say that it went smashingly successful. Now, here's the thing, right? Some kids, I'm sure, might not be doing all the right things, but the most beautiful part of this is students know it's not allowed. So we're not getting trouble when a student is found with, have a phone on them, if they do choose to keep it even though they're not supposed to. But I would honestly say that there was so much angst around it. We were worried about parents feeling safe, insecure, and we added extra lines in our offices so parents would be able to reach kids and have a quiet space if kids wanted to call their parents. I just felt really happy with my teachers working really hard and really diligent. I feel like the students came back to school and knew what was expected, and really did not give us a hard time at all. So overall, I would say that the cell phone policy has gone really, really well. At the end of the day, any misstep has just been very minor, and it's been handled very easily, and in the end, the kids have just done a really nice job. So overall, I would say things are going well. And the biggest, most amazing part of this is when you go and you walk by classes, you don't see anybody on a phone at all, ever. So everybody at least looks like they're paying attention to instruction.
Or in cafeteria, launching.
Exactly. We're playing Uno. We tried to play dice, I had to stop it. We can't play dice at school anymore. So if your children do say that I took their dice, it's accurate, I did, I'll get it back at the end. All right, so that's our presentation. Thanks for hanging on with us. I know it's late on a Monday night. Any questions? You guys are amazing. All right, thank you so very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You too.
All right, Eli, you ready, sir?
I guess so. All right, we're up. A little short for today, and have to get going and miss a practice right now. Court doesn't like to let him miss practice. The BHS rock band classes, we'll be performing on the 11th. The high school wind ensemble is having its winter concert, where BHS alumni members and members of the community have been invited to perform alongside the band, Slay Ride, on the The high school wind ensemble is having its winter concert where BHS alumni members and members of the community have been invited to perform alongside the band, Sleigh Ride, on Tuesday the 16th. The senior class will be holding a fundraiser at Chappalway on the 10th. And varsity hockey is four games into their season. Indoor track had its first meet at Brockport on Friday. Boys basketball opens their season on Wednesday, girls' basketball plays Tuesday, and then wrestling had their first meet on the 2nd. So Eli, why don't you give a little shout-out about your podcast?
Yeah, I've got a few episodes out.
What's the name of it?
Blue Devil Radio, anywhere you can find podcasts. We've got it on YouTube now, so.
Oh, it's on YouTube now?
Yep, new, big step forward in the Blue Devil Radio history.
Where are some things you talk about? Most probably on the most, by the way, so he's doing a break.
Most, most anything, I mean, I especially like talking about sports, so a lot of times we'll have a segment talking about even professional sports. Especially during like football season, I gave my opinions on the football team and, you know, how that was going. Mr. Kala comes up with some, so different people to interview, some different teachers. He's got, he's going around, I think, the next couple of weeks, talking to teachers about why they enjoy teaching. So I think it's, I think it's a lot of, a lot of good stuff that, you know, to be honest, I don't think you really see anywhere else, so I enjoy being a part of it.
You did a good job. That's all I got?
Good?
Yeah.
You have five stars.
That was another time. All right, appreciate it.
Thanks Eli.
Have a good practice. I'll try. All right, next up is our superintendent's report.
So I just wanted to begin by sharing this little video. I'm not going to play the whole thing because it's six minutes long, but I did want you to see some of it. This is a Thanksgiving video that was done by Emily Benedict, but it features our staff and students. I'm just going to play part of it, it was posted on Facebook and Parents Square, but it's a cool, it's a cool little video, I just want you to see it and see what it goes through.
Thanksgiving, Batavia, this is what I'm thankful for. I am thankful, of course, for my wife and three awesome children, Megan, Matthew, and Adeline. I'm thankful for my two dogs. I am thankful for the Buffalo Bills and I'm also thankful for the wonderful gift of music. Have a great Thanksgiving. Here's what the rest of our district had to say about their Thanksgiving dishes.
I'm thankful for...
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 I am thankful for...
Co-workers.
For my grandbabies.
For my family dog.
My girlies and coffee.
For all the kids that I get to work with every day, my family, really bad dad jokes, and the Buffalo Bills.
I'm thankful for my family and especially my boys, Asher and Carter.
I'm thankful for my baby duck.
I am grateful that one of our students who recently moved away has come right back to us, I'm happy.
I'm thankful for football, my Monday game.
I am thankful for my family, I am thankful for this wonderful job that I can work with teachers and students. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
I'm thankful for my mommy and my daddy.
I'm thankful for my staff and students and families at Jackson Primary, happy Thanksgiving.
I am thankful for coffee in the mornings and getting to come here and see all these little cute look-its. My family, my friends, my job. I'm thankful for my health, I'm thankful for friendships, I'm really thankful for the New York Yankees, the Buffalo Bills. I pray for them all.
My family, Robert Morris, and the people at the MRC, shout out to them.
Forty-Niners, Robert Morris, my friends, my little kiddos, I love it.
I'm thankful for this wonderful job where I come in every day and play with these...
Young, I, I, I love gardening.
I am thankful for my students and for my family, having my family home and all together this holiday.
I am thankful for Lifetime Movies, coffee, and snuggling up on my couch on a chilly cold morning.
I am so thankful for our faculty and staff here at John Conley and all of our amazing students.
I'm thankful for hockey.
I'm thankful for my family and the family parties we have.
I'm grateful for food.
I am thankful for all of the teachers and the students at JK.
I'm so thankful that I am getting to come to JK every day and spend time with my favorite kiddos and I'm so thankful for my health.
I am so super thankful for this gorgeous weather today, for the sunshine on my face when I got to drive into school to come see all my favorite little honeys in class today. We get to have an amazing circle at our family meeting going on right now. I am so grateful for my job, for my family, for my friends, and especially for my little JK people, I love them so much and I'm so grateful.
I'm thankful for my family and my dog.
I'm thankful for my family and friends.
I'm thankful for my family and my JK reading family.
I'm thankful for my family and all of our students at JK.
I'm thankful for a house to cover my head.
I'm thankful for your clothes.
I'm thankful for my friends and family.
I'm thankful for my family and my coworkers at JK.
I am thankful for sports because I have something to do.
I'm thankful for my friends and family and the Buffalo Bills and the Buffalo Sabres.
I'm so thankful for my family, but so much for my school family. I just love our school family at JK for over 20 years, just celebrating Thanksgiving with them, I love it. Always thankful for the Red Sox, and this is going to be their year.
I'm thankful for pumpkin spice coffee.
I'm thankful that I get to bring my therapy dog Barney to school to support the students.
We're thankful for each other.
For my family and I'm thankful for being a part of the Blue Devils family.
I'm thankful for my family and friends.
Playing basketball.
I'm thankful for sports, my teammates.
I'm thankful for playing hockey.
I'm thankful for my sports and my friends and my family.
I'm thankful for being able to work with all students at JK and Middle School.
I'm thankful for all the kind people.
I'm thankful for my great teachers.
I'm thankful for my family and sports.
I'm thankful for my dogs and sports.
I'm thankful for having friends.
I'm thankful for life.
I am super thankful for all the donuts that the kids give me.
I am thankful for my wonderful family and I'm also thankful for my BMS family with all of the students, staff, and parents here.
I am thankful for my boss, Jason Smith, and for my two pets, Gemma and Karen.
I am thankful to be working for Mid-TM City School this year, I really do love my job.
I'm thankful for my friends and family, a few extra days to spend with family and friends this week and a cheerful goodbye to a place I've spent 30 years.
Thankful for my wife and kids and the fact that everyone's healthy right now.
I am thankful for this year that my family will be coming together for Thanksgiving, of course, but looking forward to a wonderful winter season, sports season, and I was very thankful for our fall athletes and this great community, Batavia, I'm very happy to be a part of.
All right, I'm thankful for my family and my super sweet Casio calculator.
I am thankful for my family, for my friends, for my opportunity, I am thankful for the world around me.
I'm thankful for my family and having the opportunity to help my mom out and we bought a house together, so I'm thankful for that.
I am so thankful for my family and my four dogs at home and my cozy pajamas and my puppy slippers. But most important, every day, I'm so thankful to be at BHS, all my awesome students and really amazing staff that I get to work with. So I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving.
I'm thankful to be able to work with all these kids every day, I love them, I love the families I work with. I'm grateful for my own family and I'm grateful for, uh, oh no, I blew the whole thing. I don't know, my coworkers, I got the best coworkers I could ask for, I got the best team I could ask for.
Happy Thanksgiving!
Well, I couldn't stop the whole thing, sorry about that. So I just want to thank our staff and students that are proud of that video. We're going to do another one for Christmas time, I think so, that should be coming out soon. Speaking of Thanksgiving, I want to recognize our staff and students, we have a number of food drives across the district. I celebrate against students in middle school with the 12-11 students, we already have Thanksgiving food drive across the district. There's some folks from Jackson and Middle School, just as an example, North High School, BKA does something as well, we just want to recognize that and thank them. This is a lot more from last presentation, we're going to have the football athletes recognized, where there are our fall football honorings from the fall athletic season, they were out when I did the last report. I want to recognize our first team and second team students for their successful seasons. Jamie Tierra's was fantastic, congratulations for the drama club and his women, our staff, it was a lot of fun, a lot of laughs, it was really quite enjoyable. Jenny mentioned this, the high school conference day, we did have a conference day district-wide. This is why I highlighted the high school staff because I sat in on that whole session. And it was really kind of cool because they sat around and they problem-solved different scenarios regarding win, which you heard Jenny talk about that. We had parent-teacher conferences, our aides participated, our staff, they told us on CPR, technology, stress management. Other schools had parent conferences, but really, that was cool, the new high school teachers really diving in around students around wins. Just want to thank them and their leadership team. Gus Crawford, a special honor, has been recognized as All-State, of course. So that's not, that's an honor that does not happen at all, so I want to recognize Gus and our music teachers for the work they've done for him. And winter sports are back, which has decided to have wrestling, was the first one to start, but you heard you had to talk about the other teams that have already begun. But we all, we already celebrated senior night for wrestling last week. And again, here's the, Eli mentioned this as well, the wind ensemble has invited alumni and community members to participate in Sleigh Ride next Tuesday. I will, of course, be there participating and watching, so if you want to sign up, any alumni musicians here, have you had any Jenny play?
Orchestra.
An orchestra, so. Staff and students are invited to participate, we are looking forward to that new tradition. And upcoming dates for the board, you've heard the concerts, we have chorus concerts at the middle school, it's a broad night. Rock band concert, that's always a blast, the high school band concert's coming up next Tuesday. Band and orchestra concert, and then we have, of course, winter recess. And wish everybody a happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, did have one other thing, it seems not on here, business item. I think it's either the third or fourth Saturday in January, there's the legislative breakfast, the Saturday morning, I don't have the exact date, but it's usually the third or fourth Saturday, I can't, I can get to the date. This year's going to be at Lesworth, so we'll find it, we'll find the date, Pat Broke will sign it out, you know, I'm sure. But that does come up in January. And then we also have, by January, the first Tuesday in January, we have another, we have another PLC session live, so I'll send that out as well. But those are just two business items, the legislative breakfast, a few of you have gone with that in the past, it's already a good event to go to and advocate. A Saturday morning in January, and we're also going to recognize one of our programs and the PLC workshop in early January, so.
Sounds good. All right, moving on. Next up for consent grouping, we need a motion to approve the grouping of consent items.
So must.
So move by Jen, do I have a second? By far, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That'll bring us right up to old business, which we've been discussing.
So just want to update the board, you heard Mr. Lang talk at the last meeting about one of our budget drivers, one of those, of course, is the preschool program, Robert Morris. So since we last met, I want to update you as to what has already happened and what the next steps are. We did have a meeting this morning with reps from the county, from Genesee County, we're identifying a few pieces. In that meeting, it was myself, Dr. Corr, Mr. Lang, Mrs. Marcinian, I'm listening to Corzilis, and then Paul Pettit, his staff from the county. We just kind of assessed the current situation. We are looking to have 15 to 20 more students return to the program this year, which will help us with revenue. So there are some students that have gone to Monroe County or Erie County, we'll try to get them back. As we speak, four new letters have been issued, this is an offer this year, okay? So four new letters have been issued, the goal is obviously to fill all open slots. But then moving into next year, we're going to, again, look at our program very carefully. The goal is to have that program break even, right? So that's important to us and the board. We're going to look at enrollment, looking at student needs and staffing needs, and then throughout now, the rest of the budget season, either Andy or I will be doing more updates on that as well. So we have engaged in the process, we had a meeting this morning, and Miss Malan is going to have, no? So we are trying to fill those slots that are open now for at least break even this year. So that's the, and I also, last Thursday, I went to legislative lunch and at Albert, I spoke with Greg Torre, who is Senator Brel's rep, Steve Hawley, and Congress Room 10 is rep, but it's most of the state officials. And I reached out to local superintendents who have districts forced through to kind of approve of their districts to see if they'd be interested in something for MOA to help offset the costs, so. Because if they don't come here, they have to go elsewhere, so they're not obligated to do that, but I have begun the conversation with my colleagues.
But you haven't heard anything from the state?
I just sent email this morning, nothing from the state. I did get a letter back from one of the assembly people that I wrote to, can't recall, it wasn't one of ours in this region, that was in the county. So we can add, mention that also as well at the legislative lunch, and it does concern statewide. We looked into BOSI's, the rate setting isn't issued. The program obviously is very available, but we recognize, as Andy said in the last meeting, we need to look at all areas. So we're trying to do two things, we're trying to fill the slots this year as we speak, and then we're going to be addressing it for next budget season as well.
When you say fill the slots, you mean for like January, these kids starting in January?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have some, we have some open seats in some classrooms.
And no additional staff will be needed to fill those?
No, 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 no.
So your anticipation is, let's get through this year and then next year, the break even?
That's not my anticipation, that's my goal.
Your goal, right, right. So you don't expect, you don't expect any changes in the, in the opportunities that, the space that we have?
I think we can look at maximizing spaces, the classroom spaces we currently have.
Questions? So, but you don't have any thought that this program may evolve into something else? Like reduce?
Yeah, so if we can maximize it, we're going to have to reduce it, yes. Yes, I do have thoughts on that, yes, I do, 100%. When I talk about maximizing efficiency, that's really what I'm saying, is looking at ways to either get more students to come and/or looking at the current enrollment, classroom sizes, classroom signs, that type of thing.
What alternatives do other schools have if, if this program here at Batavia doesn't work?
Well, there was, what was it? Yeah, so it was the RSC, they're no longer in the business, you know. They had to send them to outer district placements, or try to run them home.
But I guess I'm confused about like, so if we get more students in in January, who is paying for those students?
So if we get more students in, that brings in more revenue, so the more students that come, the more revenue we get from the state.
Okay.
Program isn't full yet.
Program's not full.
For example, in the 12-11 classroom, there might be seven kids, so that we can insert five seats there. If we put the kids in there, we'd receive reimbursement for five more students.
For five more students.
And the reimbursement's significant, it's about $36,000 per student for the whole year. So even for half a year, we just help. You know, with the classrooms we have, the ideal is to fill the seats. If we filled all seats from day one, the program would break even, it would not cost us as much. It's because the way registrations come in, it's, it's different than, you know, having an all-call to, you have to wait to process through CPSE to ensure that kids can come and have an opportunity to be, it's a specialized program.
The intent for next year, back to Allison's question, is to have the program break even. So that's, as we plan for next year, that's going to be a topic of deep conversation, kind of planning meetings. As far as to our current question is, the goal is to try to fill more seats now.
So there's not even any talk, even if we fill those seats, they're breaking even this year? Like that's not even possible?
It would be close.
It'd be close.
How, how can you anticipate for next year, the schools that might want to participate in this program? Do they have to commit to you by a specific amount of time?
So that goes through, that goes through the CSC process. So we have our CSC process here, and then those recommendations come from the other schools in terms of what they want, what type of program they want the child to be in.
So there's no guarantee?
No, but we're looking at longitudinal data to see how many seats we have filled by when. We have 48 slots total in the program, if it's not conceivable to start with 48 for the year, we know that's what it takes to break even. We could scale back to say, you know, 40 students or 36 students. And then we just, we just plan appropriately with staffing and the number of classrooms for what we think is conceivable to fill early on. You know, it's really important to get the kids in there as long as possible.
And what would you do with the staff if you had to? And what would you do with the staff if you had to cut it to 35 or 40 students?
So the staff, you know, the staff would have to look at, you know, missing nori, the staff could be reassigned if they have other vacancies in the school. Those would be different conversations.
We're always looking for special education teachers. There's a couple openings right now, where we have either long-term or we're leaving. So, you know, it's part of the big picture of planning for all of next year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for that update. And moving on to new business. First up, we need a motion to approve the 10 and 12-month employee paid holiday schedules for the 2026-2027 school year. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
First by Jen. Do I have a second? Second by Corinne. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next motion under new business will be motion following the MOA between the BTA and BCSD in regards to Brock Morris faculty members to be allowed to work after hours with compensation to move into their respective updating areas. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
First by Jen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Barb. Any discussion? Do we have anticipated a mall on this handy, like how many hours the staff's looking at?
So they've been allocated six hours, so each. As we speak, Jessica Corzilis has a list that I'll have for you next month to have. Did they sign up for either actual school or during the break, and they've been allocated six hours at that break, plus the aid? We don't need that MOA for the aid because they already paid their contract. So six hours maximum for teacher, more time we need to address that. And we do have the conference day the Monday before, the Monday after the February break. We still haven't gotten announced formally, but that's a plan given, but the full data as well.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Next up, number three item is a motion to approve extra classroom activity financial report ending June 30th, 2025, as prepared by Mango Metzler, Barr, and Company LP certified public accountants, and extracurricular activ, extra classroom activity corrective action plan related to the evaluation of the district's extra classroom activity funds ending June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mrs. Benedict. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And last under new business is a motion to accept Batavia State School District's single audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2025, as prepared by Mango Metzler, Barr, Company LP certified public accountants. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Mrs. Benedict. A second. By Barb. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We do have a number of reports for administrative reports from the curriculum instruction business office online. Please take a look at those. Do we have any board members, any comments, or other reports that you'd like to give?
I just have a question. Is the board going to do a goal setting? I know we did it for Jason. Is the board planning on doing a goal setting?
If you like, we can add to our January meeting. Would we add a meeting or would we?
Do a workshop on this? If you could tie it in already, yeah.
The workshop, not the workshop.
That Tuesday in January, just mentioned earlier.
Okay. Why don't we tie it into that workshop? And then we can, will that be before the, the January meeting?
Before January.
Okay. And then we can discuss that.
I just think that we need to review what our goals were last year and see if we accomplished any of them.